Call meeting to order at six thirty, would you give the question please? Does anybody have a concept for anything that's coming in? And then, and the minutes of the April seventh meeting, today's the very tenth work of the month.
Yeah, I'm just reading through now, on number fourteen. I mean, a little too curious. It says ask about a daycare task force, the new agreed to work on the campus.
Didn't that happen?
Well, I thought that you were going to look and see if we could legally set one up. I'm looking for the town to set one up, not me.
Well, we can get to that after the discussion. I knew what that changed, something may-
Minutes to write or whatever.
That was the discussion that I remember.
Did you say you were gonna have a day care?
I said that I would agree to it by the time that you all approve the task force that can be done.
Okay, alright.
So I have a motion and a second. Did you want something changed on that campus or no?
It doesn't really matter, if we're gonna talk about it, it might be more-
Okay, follows in favor? Five, Sarah? Addition, deletion?
Yes, I have a few additions. I'd like to make a five A Jim Carter parking ordinance update. And six A local license approval, Austin Lee got it here. Six B tree growth penalty. Dan Roxanne signatures, and seven A daycare discussion.
Excuse me, seven A what?
Daycare discussion.
Okay. Um, in favor? Five, Sarah? Okay. Three five, and some more is for everyone.
For island, yeah. So, Mitch Swanson, he's a contractor, and he's a contractor for someone who had purchased a portion of most of Moose Island. And there is a plan for forty cabins and a lodge on the island. And he would like to use, utilize the junction north, the north side, the north side of the landing park, the Kelly's, Kelly's restaurant side, to utilize a barge for transport of material and machinery out there. If he can't get access here in town, then he has to come out of Rock, what he said he told me. But he pre-purchased EJ Carriers barge. And he needs to transport the excavators and equipment and dump trucks with gravel. And that's why he's looking for permission to do that.
Do you know, I mean, is he looking to leave this here, that there, or pull it out every time, or?
I would say if you have to do it to you for to make that decision to allow that, I would say, you know, I mean, on weekends or whatever. I would, if it's approved, I would recommend that any kind of trucks or truck or trailers, equipment hauling type vehicles be left off of junction north just because of the way they come in and or park it in the overflow lot and then, you know, bring over the excavator or drop their excavator off over there where he needs. Looking for permission to utilize that side of the war. I guess there's a dirt ramp over there, right?
I'm trying to picture it in my head, I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're talking about.
Where's that? So the plain, the plain rail side?
That where Sally does her stuff?
Yeah. Well, hand it out towards the lake, there's a dirt ramp if you would. And he has to use a ramp on the barge so you can probably step on it.
So, beyond the beach?
No, the war.
Yeah, I know, beyond the beach or-
But how you command, this is before, so if you command the one way, you go by the boat lading and you make that left turn, there's right straight front, you can look at that way.
Very exciting thing to think about.
Yep.
It's a little-
It's where the access for the ice racing.
Oh, so it's that narrow twenty feet wide, something like that. I, to me, that seems a little bit crazy during our busy summertime to have trucks and excavators and barges and all that, right in the middle of our... Where people, the kids are doing sailing, where people are fishing, where people are launching boats and parking. A lot of times that gets congested as this, where people are pulling up to take turns.
He didn't tell me if this is gonna be like on with dump truck, with dump truck, trucker. I suspect it won't be that, because you don't have room for several trucks, you know? So it's not gonna be continuous all day long. One says you have to transport the equipment and the material up to the island.
What's the timeframe?
They don't know that. I'm suspecting this, this summer.
So I mean, forty units?
Forty cabins.
Right. It's not gonna happen in March?
No, it's not. They have to fall.
I'd say we need more detail. You know, that place is busy. Like I said, there's people lined up four or five at a time, waiting to get in there. They're going around that corner, pulling their boats out, pulling the pods, that's a busy area. You know, maybe if we said that he was gonna load any equipment and be out of there about nine in the morning or something, maybe the last time you could do a trip out of there, or?
And maybe if you could time frame how many trips he sees, you know, what does his future look like? I mean, he could put that lumber on there the last three weeks. But gravel trucks, I mean, if they need, you know, a million yards of gravel, you know? I just maybe just ask, you know, so we get some sort of idea of the time, sorry, I mean-
And what's the timeline?
Yeah, and you know, what-
What timeframe?
And what level of use? You know, we can't just open up that place to be his personal launching pad for six months. It's a public space.
Where the cars from where the boat launches, they directly cross, or is it? I'm still not a hundred percent sure what we're talking about. Is it directly across from the other boat launch boards, or is it?
Yeah. Yeah, on the north side.
Yeah, that's it.
So the ice racing, the ice racing, well, we can do that.
I suspect it turns into a problem like that.
It's very busy here.
Especially somebody that can't back up real good like me, I gotta, I gotta, I did two jig that I'm on a nine gravel truck, two feet off my lumber.
So timeframe and what level of use, any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, we've gotta have some discussion around safety. I mean, that's, I don't know, and certainly if there are any damages done, whether it's force-
Our insurance might not even allow it.
So I guess you're asking like to get more information from Mitch?
And, and the insurance, I mean?
Our insurance?
Yeah, I mean, our insurance-
Your insurance, but-
I know, but would our insurance, how would our insurance feel about?
And then say the liability it'll be?
Well, it's a public space, so it's-
Yeah, but not, it's not-
If I throw my truck off the beginning, it's... I don't understand what, what could, what could happen, I understand what could happen, but at what, what level? What are you thinking, possibility?
I don't know, I don't know. Seems to me that you all quieter places in town like Forest Street, nobody goes there. That's a perfect spot for the barge.
I wonder, I wonder what he's contacted for, see if they're enough, or?
Questioning him.
Questioning them, he's got gate blocked, you know, come right-
Forest would be a good one, but it could be a lot of destruction there.
Fine.
Good, good question, I can ask him that. Alright, okay, I'll try to get some more information on that.
Peter?
Well, last was March third, it was last time I was in here, so we're talking about packing, the packing problem kind of, so. And I know it's only been a month, it's all right, did some real quick stats, I just figured I'd throw those all along here at the same time, just for the last month, what we've done since March third. We've had seven traffic accidents, three of PIs, sixteen welfare checks, four theft complaints, a trespassing, three domestics, violation protection order, eight agency assists, we've had two drug overdoses, one being fatal. And we've actually done background checks on twelve concealed area fire requests. So for this time of year, I mean, usually, everything, for that venue, it's been zeros across more than, that's what that was. Something for this company, is it?
Is this, do you think from the influx?
Ah, definitely, a lot of influx from the COVID, people come here from last summer and then there's so many people that not, that are not, haven't gone back.
But those, is that where these stats are coming from, as long as they're that, or?
Um, some, like, uh, the overdoses, obviously, of the drugs, drugs that are more prevalent, the type of drugs, the fentanyl. Um, it's not been, it's not, just in the last year, it's really taken off on like, and stuff like that and everything. As far as, but the mastics, I think if the people are just sort of wearing masks and, and have not, they're just getting together too much. The government says it always is. And I think that's, that's some of it, and, um, things they were affectionate on water, so I think it's all come to land, just, I think that's what people, people are getting wrestles. Need to, you know, they're getting shots and they say they still gotta wear three masks. So, I think that's a lot of, of that there. I had one, one around, was talking about packing, um, on a lot of packing, the packing places around. And trying to figure out how we can do, deal with the dark side packing and everything. And I came up with a few ideas of going around the C on the packing, which I guess never really pay attention, like in front quarters, over there, we have eight spaces that are there, you don't realize, but it's kinda, there's actually, there's actually places there that's utilized and, you know, think about, um, if we limit some of the packs from downtown in time a little bit, obviously, people don't wanna come and stay more than twenty minutes or two hours, they want to come down into town with shopping. But we gotta find places from the pack and walk there. Mike and I were talking, like, some of the things I was looking at, you look at basically from where you've gone and Scott Patrick's place is, a couple spots there, so if we work to go back, trip map towards the school. I mean, we could paint that and put in twelve, fifteen, twenty-five, figure what it wants, a lot of space there we can utilize for packing. Um, obviously, Mike's been working on behind the fire department, possibly maybe a little put some space, some packing down there. Um, so I think there's a lot of options, a lot of options out there. Lately, the street is in construction, this, this, uh, some, putting a pack in, I guess they're gonna be packing on the side, side of the street. Is what I was told, so we're gonna give us, give us some-
Seven, I think, seven.
Packing along the road, or are they putting no peril?
It's all along the road.
Yeah, so with that comes, I think we're gonna need to put some on the opposite road, private roads, no packing signs. Because if we're gonna have one side, it's just too narrow to have people try to sneak in both sides. And they'll have something to do, do that, but there's one thing else was gonna mention that we oughta think about, purchase some sometimes and put them up around town so we can actually enforce some of that there. Because people like she, one person that has packs over there, then there's gonna be a whole line, especially when we, when it's packing downtown. Some of the thoughts, there, I'll pass these up. This is approved, quick diagram of downtown. And, uh, some of the, looking the, uh, the diagram one, um, it was, we have twenty-five packing spots downtown. And I guess laid off with the extra packing spots where we have before we started these businesses and stuff. One of the, couple of thoughts I was thinking, and I just wanted to throw out, when have you guys decided what your thought is? Is limit, uh, time packing, like on the north side, basically, you can't care, it's all the way down through the flying service. Make that side two hour packing, that should give people time to come in, do what they need to do, go in and buy, go to the dark side, have lunch where they want and leave. Um, take care of some of the complaints we've been getting, people in town wanting to come down and do something, they can't find a spot. So do that whole, that whole side, two hour packing, and on the south side, um, there's, I mean, couple, a couple options, one was, um, I know JMo and some of the businesses want a twenty minute packing. We can, they do twenty minute packing the whole strip, um, or we can break it up and have, obviously, Harris, you know, Harris Grove, I think is one of the main things we, they kind of brought this about, people come in packing there, camping out for long periods of time. And I think definitely, probably those three in front, there's no reason we can't make, limit those twenty minutes. If you're coming in, keep them moving, even in the dairy bar, um, twenty minutes should be more than enough time to come in and get their, their ice cream and, and- Um, and, um, like saying, so that's up to, a few guys, is exactly what you think you wanna do as far as the time, if you want the whole length twenty minutes, or like, you can see I've written in, on the time I was thinking down by the first back, there's two spots there. Um, you know, restaurant, have a couple spots for two hour packing, time to get in and get out. Same thing up by, you know, we have flat, and this is closed now, but if someone opens it up, I think they're gonna probably wanna at least have spots people can come in and stay for, you know, for meal. But either way, we need to, we almost made the decision what we're gonna do is, obviously, get time, we need to post it appropriately. And then, obviously, the- We're gonna have some gonna come along more complaints from people then, because it gives them something to complain about, people in the saddle lot ride each other out with all being, spending their thirty minutes.
So how do you police that, Mike, uh?
Yeah, we're just gonna answer that.
Well, well, there's several ways. Why don't we acquire a packing person?
Mark tires.
Yeah, you can mark tires, um, this is actually, if you can believe it, in case law, and some of the market mentality that come out of, I think, Bang or Portland, or obviously, they do that. Um, our idea is basically to try to keep the, keep them moving, get in, well, um, because like, one of the things, obviously, the dark side, people packing there, and that's where my thought is, is two hour packing, then right underneath it, no overnight packing, period, no overnight packing. And when we go forward, I kind of support in some of these ordinances, um, uh, for, you know, for, for some of that, that's one of my things I was, I was thinking about, um.
Jim, up above, um, the road, where the Mud Tunnel and the, um, Becky Ward-
Where you placed, yep.
That's always used to be, not on the corner, but there always used to be parking in front of that before they started moving all their business out there.
Yeah, that's gonna be all, that's all private, and it's gonna be flat.
But I mean, our car, the road, that's-
Yeah, they're gonna, that's gonna be there, it's gonna be like the driveway coming, but from what I'm understanding, that's gonna be business frontage.
So this year, there's some construction down there, so I'm not gonna put parking spots there, so we can, next year we'll put parking spots.
Okay, so we will get those-
Everybody on the driveway, ladies and gentlemen, yes. Yeah, it's, you know, I don't wanna pay for painting the parking spot, that this is gonna be a lot of structure.
Okay, because we always do parking, so.
Yes, there's no spaces there now, that's marked out, up, up there.
No, I mean, it may, it may mean in the past, they stopped paying them because-
People, they're still pulling them off, pulling them back and on it. Yeah, and that's why I didn't do anything there, because there's, there's all the things on what's, what happened there.
So what, what's the process for this, do we adopt it and it happens, or?
Yes, if you look at the page, the next page I've been there, basically, like, Mike found a nineteen ninety-three ordinance, and I took that and cut in teeth, well, I tried to cut in teeth, and I'm not sure if it's clean.
You're not there.
It was, because the south, anyway, after a while, a while of pugging away, I took, taken that, went with the town that already had, and this was like the most effective town ordinance the town had, and kind of added to it, and tried to tweak some of the additions and problems we've had and added to it. And basically, once you guys agree to it, this, it basically will be the ordinances for it to be enforced. So one is basically look, look through the first hour, and then definitions. But some of the, some of the packing, through page two, general packing regulations, these are some of the, um, from the old ones, and then I've added, included in. And that's what I'm looking, I was actually just before, well, this later tonight, I know, but I think I probably need to add a three dot eleven for the overnight packing, because I don't think the no packing would actually cover that, mind.
So, you're talking about making all of downtown two hours?
Well, originally, what I was, I'm saying, thinking, I mean, we can do all whatever you guys want, but I think if we do all downtown, I think you're gonna have a couple businesses complaining.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, except for places where people kick up.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to close it, I mean, we can neither do two hours one side, twenty minutes on the other side, two hours and then picking two, like on the map that I had, which packing spaces, you know, with the business thing, packing spaces you wanna do two hours, which is twenty minutes. I also, I did put in a thing for one hour, a ordinance, because it's just a matter of time that we're gonna be back around, I figured if I just put it in the ordinance now, so you don't have to mess around, if you want a place you want, a one hour packing. Don't know what you do, if you're willing or not, but the way things are going and developing, anyway, it's a good possibility. Um, I was able to put in the snow removal, I put in the overnight packing, um, one thing I haven't put in, because I wanted to mention to you guys, is what you thought was, as far as the patent packing law, there's a lot of people pulling in there, leaving vehicles and packing, going to camps and stuff, about the possibility of adding, that's kind of a no overnight packing from June first to October first. You know, another busy time, because there'll start the people coming in and applying on Thursday, pick your packing spot and stay there for the weekend, and then we're doing it on some of the spots, three and five, and I'll take care of some of the, but again, a couple I wanted to throw out, if there's something you wanna do, we can, I can certainly add that in, um, on that.
Jim, on your particular parking law, when you're leaving it on the phone pole, is there a sign there that says that you can't use the signboard?
Yeah, there's no, there's-
I know, but I, I might, I don't think that, but-
Yeah, yeah. There's pictures of someone that'll do it, isn't there? There's pictures of somebody that one, is that?
Not on the phone, no.
Like a ticket.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd put it up, I'll take it there.
It's just, I just kind of thought it was funny, that somebody might look at that and go, what? I know, that's a different feeling.
Um, section five is the fines, um, I don't know if you guys can look at that, I know a couple of you mentioned the murder, have sought to them, have high fines, but I don't think, I think if you go too high, um, all the new people who are in the test, it's gonna cost a ton of money, it's gonna cost for a hundred dollar fine, it's gonna cost us three hundred dollars to fill a shift, then have someone go over on that, they're gonna keep it flowing off. It's like a voluntary compliance thing, kind of my thought is, you know, twenty, twenty bucks or twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars, whatever. They'll pay it, because it's easier for them to go to court, you know, than to do that.
Well, there's the fee for persons for overnight packing, only fifty dollars, that's not my guy, fifty dollars stay overnight?
For miracles.
But if you don't pay it after three, I'm gonna throw it.
What kind of?
I'm talking about that. Well, I mean, we can do it whatever you want, but I, I kind of, these are all open and, I got it all saved on the computer and I can change it early back.
Yeah, 'cause a guy comes, I mean, just using that one for example, a guy drives up here from outer state, and he wants to park his sled in sixteen bladed trailer, you know, and I'll load it, I'll pay the fine, fifteen bucks.
But that's just overtime, I mean, then you get the overnight packing, and then if you get the forty-eight hours, look in there, the extended packing is forty-eight.
Oh, overtime packing, I thought it said overnight parking, oh, oh, I'm sorry, that's my mistake.
You know, some people probably just didn't even realize, like, it would take to, they're calling excited.
Exactly. You don't wire down now.
Yeah, and then where I know it's happening, and it's just, that's why, well, some of them just take care of it now, and they take care of the miller drug. I mean, I talked to a lot of people, just learned about that, unfortunately, there's nothing inside of some of that, and might be, take care of it now, and same thing, as soon as we can, just to, to, um, fourth summer, busy season gets here, so. And then you throw some warning cards out there first, just to get people, and the thing of it, and then-
What about water?
Right, exactly.
So, what about the parking area that is in behind the corner of pork, I mean, the-
Yeah, there's what? The six on the side of those in there, there's one handicap out back, and there's fifteen spots out there.
Is, is there any limit to those, or?
There's not right now, and I didn't know, um-
So you propose in the same sort of parking pieces there?
Um, I-
Does that give some credit for actually, right?
Yeah, that's what, there's people I think that stay there, and that's why, that hasn't, that hasn't really been, been the problem on that, I know, and seen it kind of out of the way. And I think some of the people, for the good use of apartments and stuff, and that's why I was going on my head. There's like a couple cars there all the time.
Yeah, I mean, because Harris is, I think, is there, you know?
They rent, they have a couple renters up, yeah.
Right. I wonder if they could put like reserve parking, like where they close out the driveway, for that, maybe?
Yeah.
They could put some reserve parking there for those apartment people.
Well, there's, there's staff for the drugstore parks behind the entrance.
But they're tired, and what I really know is, is people like, wanna sell a vehicle and they want us to drop it off down there with the sale sign. You know, in winter, I mean, people going to camps and picking kids up that are from, that are in camp from college and leaving the day, it's not falling in there, but during the busy time is really one of the time, I think we need a limit to.
So, I, I've got a question, so, like in the winter time, is that what you said, that, you know, somebody was coming in because they knew call and said, can I, can I overnight get there?
And that's where I've always-
I'm going out to camp and I'm coming back, so.
Yeah, and I was, in the winter time, I've always pulled them, had them across from the town office.
That's where we tell them to come.
Or, and I've pulled them if we had in the winter time, and it's never been a miss for that.
So that, you don't wanna change that, that kind of might be the thing?
I'm thinking that's, that's my, I'm forcing, yeah, I'm saying, just from June to October.
Okay.
So, I can make a suggestion, from Folsom, the reality of maybe, I think we should make that all twenty minutes, because I think it should be typical or confusing to people to throw stuff, one, one two hour, one twenty minutes, I don't know, we could like, if you're probably just-
But what, what if the, the pub, I don't know if they're gonna open or not, but if they do, I mean, people can't go in and have a dinner in twenty minutes.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but not anybody's in part in terms of the place they want to go.
Well, that's true.
I'm kind of thinking twenty minutes, that, like in front of the drugstore, if they ever, if you go in there and sit again, um, you know, and hang out, that that might actually freak the babies out, that, you know, if you watch them, make sure they're not going twenty minutes. I don't know if it should be thirty minutes or an hour, or, you know?
They can find the class, three more, or two hours.
I think that's why we wanted to let them park in front of the area, but-
Well, I think we would just have them capable and insert the restrictions and stuff like that.
That's, that's what I was understanding, that's why, that's natural reason I put that there, so they can get in, get home. So whatever you plan to say.
So we looking to do our endorsements, or like one way or the other?
If we can, yes, if you wanna take some, make changes, we can do that, endorse it, the next one. Um, I thought I was gonna talk, I put it back to May first, in case they, you guys decide to do it, do it here with the changes and.
Can you get your signs and stuff ordered, and, and in by then?
By May first, probably.
That's what I was gonna ask, because I need to know, but I'm in the process of ordering the signs now, so if I've got a number and what you want, uh, they're pretty good down the way, trying to get them, get them by, you know.
I think, I was thinking that, once we could just approve, Mike and I could sit down and see what we need for numbers of times, in order, and obviously we've got to figure out, it'd be nice to make it so it looks professional, not just random and whole hole, like wondering now, and I'm done with jamals, and first can take that thing off, and try to make it so it's professional and we're watching it.
But the other thing about the clouding too, and doing the sidewalks.
They shouldn't be on the side of the cloud. There should, what do you mean, follow sidewalks.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Not mutually, but you got signed there, I mean.
I don't believe the signings.
It's not gonna be down the road, it's gonna be a comment, but it's a sidewalk.
I, I just say something, just thinking.
Just take it all around, stick it ahead of them.
I don't know what they do down there, how, you know, they score on it.
It goes around the.
So do you wanna look at all the more, you wanna prove it so they can give a, a lot of this?
I think you should get going with that, I don't.
I see, and the thing, you know, if you just think, second thing, we think what the, by the fines, um, just real quick, if anything goes, you want me to add anything?
Where, uh?
Um, section five, okay.
I'm trying to, did you know about what these signs would be?
I, well, I basically, I did, I just went around other towns and kind of looked what they were, um, you know, like Van, like Van Gogh had, Brewer, or just all that, or some of the other town and stuff.
I didn't see it, I saw much, uh, double for handicap.
It was a hundred dollars, it was like quarter, yeah. And that's third one, and the second one goes up to two hundred, and then I think five hundred, maybe it is.
What, what's that definition, if it's the overtime parking, is that, if you, if you violate it and then you don't move it or whatever? Is that overtime parking?
Yeah, it's like twenty minutes, and you're there for two hours, overtime parking, or you're there for thirty minutes.
So you pay a fine plus fifteen?
No, that is a fine.
Oh, oh, okay, all right, I just.
Yeah, no, that is, that is a fine.
You don't think you should do a little more, if you lose kind of?
Yeah, you want.
Uh, everything else is up to twenty-five, hundred?
You wanna make everything twenty-five?
I don't know, it's a little better slack than fifteen.
Yeah.
Pay for the sound, you know, the sign's gonna be more than twenty-five dollars, I can tell you that much.
Well, they call for the guy.
What's, what's that pleasure, guys?
I, twenty-five is fine with me, except for the handicaps, that's not.
Yeah, that's, uh-huh.
Right, handicap hundred, then you have anybody?
Well, I don't know, Richard, do you know what to do?
I just want, help little folks feel able to go to the drugstore and not.
And right, that's the main, the main thing on that, and.
We're taking the weight in your own hands anyways, in the winter time, trying to catch that door with a, send in the, in the weather.
Just, right.
You gotta walk from halfway down the road, you know.
So Jim and I sat down, it was a thought, and we were sitting in the, in the prison bathroom, and thought that, you know, this one side, two hour parking, the other side kind of broken out, so it gives you, it gives you opportunity for those people to park for a few hours, go get a lunch or dinner, and then the other side is sort of quick pickups, pizza, and quick pickup, and stuff like that, so.
Can I just, I know we don't wanna work, but, this parking, you have parking ordinances already in place, Jim, just combine with.
Section eight, that's the last page, this is like your worst.
Oh, okay, I'm.
Already one, that's his date reveal, only adopted ordinances.
Oh, okay, that's why, and they're amended, is what, is what, you're doing, you already got ordinances in place, you're just amending them. So you're not making a new ordinance, just to let me know that, okay?
But it's, yeah, if you go through basically what this is going through, by, went through everything you found, from back in nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen thirty-nine, nineteen forty-seven, nineteen sixty-nine, seventy-five, ninety-three, and the one in October of twenty-twenty, basically saying those are all amended, and no longer factor into what we're gonna do. So this will oversee everything, this will oversee everything.
Right, and Jim, the only reason why I say that is because, I'm gonna, what we need to do is put that on the top, on the front page, not on the back page.
Oh, okay.
Okay, just so we know that.
Nope, you don't have to do it, we can put.
No, they just gotta, they just gotta down the top, yeah. Um, up in front of the bakery, I think, that should say two hours.
Yeah, two hours, I think.
That's like sitting down and dying, it's like, stop that, right?
Yes.
I think I've got everybody in, but it's.
I haven't been at any of it.
Yeah, it is two hours.
Right, I know, but he said something about making it all twenty minutes.
No.
That's what I was throwing out there, the one I gave you, I think I broke it up some, two hours down, and then I took one of the options, like two hours and twenty, twenty minutes on one side, two hours on the other side, or break it up. I personally think you ought to have a couple of two hours on that side, or the restaurant, you know, we have a couple, a couple restaurants on that end and.
And even the quilt shop and the rock shop, people will.
Right, yeah.
Shop longer than twenty minutes.
Absolutely, those are more for like jingles, and I know we try to make them all two hours on that side, I think we'd have to push back some of the, the one for sure.
Yeah. I made a motion to adopt it, what they worked out.
And you know people are gonna score.
No question.
Send it to Jim.
And I know it's gonna create probably more phone calls, people complaining, because they wanna call and say this guy's been there for twenty-five minutes, and not gonna be able to.
Or ain't gonna be out there with you all.
I'll give her a piece of chalk.
I, I agree with Janet, like most, but, but can I?
Not this.
And then calling guys, like, within whatever.
Did you what?
See if I had any other questions, or possibly.
I should, if I was thinking, I would definitely do it, the end of last week, and take those panels for a weekend and read them.
Right, well, six one? Well, they asked a question.
So, go ahead.
Uh, the dockside has parking to go that people stay, uh.
And that's why.
Actually, they have overnight parking, but how would you handle?
It's, I don't know, give them a ticket and next time I'm on toilet.
Oh, well, they.
It's been a problem.
Oh, okay.
They, they, they're actually.
Okay, I didn't know, if you were, if they were gonna, if you were gonna like, dockside handout, you know, overnight parking passes for those people that are cleaning their places.
Then someone must have been a parking mall that.
Okay.
Actually, I think dockside's gonna have their own parking.
They're gonna, they're gonna help, you know.
He's there making that parking lot full, that's all they're.
So I have a motion and a second to amend the parking ordinances, any other questions, comments?
Just tell them, anybody have a question, to call Rocky.
Probably deals them out, don't you, Rocky?
We're gonna, we're gonna get them all, and I'm gonna call the police department, we're gonna do it, so.
Well, we will, we will.
Did they wait?
No, I'll get, I'll sound Jimmy and I'll get him to go sign. Oh, all right, no, call Jimmy, and I'm gonna put the phone number, no, I didn't do that. No, we, we, we do now, so it's not a big deal, that's why I was asking, what it was gonna do, because it would be nice to kind of have that book shot in front of us, so we know we should, what is.
I love your favor, bye Sarah, thank you, Jim.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work.
Okay, amendment, can you know, as long as, like, that?
The lodge, this is an amendment, this is, um, so we have a ban, uh, bond, I just made a note.
I think I put a copy on it for all of you guys, and you have a new sign.
So this is, this is, we have to extend the, the date on, on the original, this is, maybe I think you would extend, or extend your date. Um, so instead of the spring.
Excuse me, guys, I can't hear, excuse me, I can't hear.
Sorry, instead of the spring bond, I would want the fall bond, so we just link the, the, um, ban.
That's not gonna have an effect on our next round of binding, right?
Extend, extend the, the date, well, I mean, to it, take a longer.
Does that need a vote to sign?
I do.
Well, yeah, you do.
Yeah.
But I have a motion.
I need you guys to sign it.
Do you need, even, is there anything you need to explain before?
I don't think so, I just need you to sign it, and I'm gonna mail it.
Can I have a motion?
Uh, I have a question for, I still don't understand it, I guess.
Okay, so here, we had a, a bond that just made a note, a ban, so you know what that is?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, and it had a date, um, that we had to apply for, for the bond. But since, since we didn't have any express applications of bond bank, we're moving to the fault, because of the discretion, so we're just extending the ban. Current, the current date we have, just extend it up. Okay, can you turn it on, just, to, we see you guys are all aware, but you're.
Done. All right.
Okay, motion?
I think that's a good one.
So. Everybody got a lot, Jim?
I love your favor, bye, Jim.
Almost like a pepper jar.
Oh, yeah, yeah, make sure you sign on the right line, Richard.
I've attended every day of school.
Do you want me to go on?
Sure.
All right, the second thing I have is a little license, little sort of license from Leisure Life Lodge, and I don't think we have any problems with that. And I think you have a copy of that as well.
On the right.
So.
Okay. I love your favor, bye, Jim.
You have a black pen? And also the name.
Tree growth minutes, second.
Yep, and the last thing that I have is, uh, C A D owns a piece of property I bought, the Ron Ridge Road, and, uh, they have since sold it, uh, and, uh, it's, uh, a young lady and her brother have sold it, have bought it, and they're taking it out of tree growth, and so this is the penalty that they're going to retain to take out a tree growth, and it's a penalty of eight thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. But you'll see the tree growth penalty is in C A D's, because they still technically own it, I don't have the.
I love your favor, bye, Jim.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you, okay. All right, number seven, personal policy review, article three.
So, article three, we possess accident, that, processes, uh, sick leaves, bereavement, that's like. So, as you know, Allison, um, had worked on this in the past, and we used our, um, recommendations, when Allison was with us, my mom, Harrison, the other question, but Allison will be able to, but I promise, please, please, definitely jump in.
Is it in our, is it in our, yeah?
No, but then I've, uh, box picked it up.
You want to go to the chair?
So. So one of the first questions I have is, do we, do we think we wanna change this paid, or sick leave with pay to like first full time off, and, and encompass everything with one, or do you wanna keep it all separate? And let, you know, keep it as is.
I guess it's kind of what's done now, isn't it?
So, yeah, in most cases, it's, it's first full time off, um, they, they have to earn it, and, as, have it designated for vacation or sick, or whatever. So, that's the first question that I have, I just wanna mention that before we go on on this.
Jim, and you dealt about it, is that a better system than, than, uh, separate, it seems to be?
And I would dare say that, for Ricky's point, that's how most people do it now, and, when those packages are designed, I think, they have that in run, when the P T O, or something you could call a task, um, design.
Right, so, so, again, that's, I just wanna mention that, uh, for us, because that, that's my, my thought as well, is to, to change all the P T O, so that way the employees can just take the P T O's off.
Does anybody have an objection to that?
What is that, okay, we, all right, so going forward, um, some of these things that Allison recommended, um, may or may not fall into this because of, of, of P T O. So, scroll down, uh, scroll, I'm sorry. Um, take a minute and read that first, first paragraph she wrote underneath the absence. And I don't know if Allison heard that part, yeah, it's a difficult. She changed, she changed the work week already, from, from what, from Sunday to Saturday, so that's, that's been changed. It was, it was recommended for the warrant week on Wednesday to Tuesday, these calendar, the year of employment equals two weeks, all the employees should start working beginning of the warrant week, kind of anything. Um, I, I changed it, when Mark and I started, we changed the paid period, Sunday to Saturday, and the new employees start on the Sunday, instead of like a midweek day, I don't know where that came from, but that's, that's been on all since I've been here, as far as that change goes. Um, just so you know, the month week is now Sunday and Saturday, you know.
Why wouldn't it, it might be for that?
Because it's the whole week, so your plans know on Sunday, right?
A little true, yes, it's true.
A week, a week of the calendar week.
Yeah, okay.
Instead of a midweek to midweek, I don't know how that would look like that. Um, it's been down to a three point one sick leave, we just talked about the P T O, so, uh, and now the new pay and leave block, uh, I jotted down, and or one hour, four hours, four hours of work, so it says, um, both, all, all full time and all full time probationary employees, uh, sick leave is earned at a rate of one quarter a day for each full warrant week, works, and may be a cumulative not to exceed a hundred and twenty, so, I think we should keep the hundred and twenty as it is, and, um, the sick leave should begin to accrue at the end of the second full warrant week of employment, however, no full time employee can, can be entitled to use it, or cash out until after twenty-six full weeks of the service, so that's a six months. full weeks of the service. So that's a six months. And then, uh, Allison recommended, if an employee cannot come to work with illness or emergency, uh, the employer's first twenty-six weeks of employment, the employee will not be paid for hours absent. Sick leave credit, however, will continue to accrue. No employee may be absent for more than three days during the first twenty-six weeks of employment without special authorization to come in. So if, 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 if an employee's out for three, three days, I should know what's wrong with that employee, you know, obviously. You know, I'd get a full order, you know, something else as well. So I think, I think we should put that, that, read that, uh, sorry, put that in there. Um.
Most, most people require, uh, healthcare providers know that it exceeds a certain.
After three days.
So.
So if you want to add that in, that, that's great. And you can see her deletions in what she, what she referenced in the right-hand column, and I agree with those. Um, the accumulated not to exceed a hundred and twenty days, and I, and I am wondering if we want to, um, adopt a sick bank. So if, um, I've accumulated a hundred and ten days, can I put ten days into the sick bank for someone who may have a need for more than, that they have a, a severe illness and they need some time off? Then I can donate ten of my days to that employee?
I think a lot of people did that.
Um, I don't, I, I feel it should be a, a bank, um, where, where someone can do that and not, um, make it so it's, so it's a, so it's a personal thing, you, you know, I don't agree with, but employee B is doing, and I don't want to donate one, ten days to him. I don't, you know, I don't want to make it like that. I, I'd like to make it just a bank. Um, I mean, but if you have employees authorized, that after a hundred and twenty days, I would like the donor to use a sick, sick bank, quote unquote. Just in case we have an employee that needs some time. But that's, it's just a, a suggestion.
Well, the school does that, right?
Know that?
The school, don't they have a quick bank? Yes, they do. So it's pretty. It's the same, and, you know, I mean, we're all the same employee. Because there were several of them that put it in when there was an ill person over there, and that person got to take from that sick bank.
But were, but weren't they, were they giving them, because I know people who've discussed that stuff, but were, weren't they donating it to a specific person? Other than a bank, no?
No, no, they did not, no.
No, okay.
When Stephen was there, his, over, uh, his extra day went to a bank, and that's where it was. And then whoever, whoever it may be.
Yeah.
Drew from that bank, and that's what it was. No, it didn't go to a specific person.
So, so someone like Roxanne, who has hours and hours and hours to accrue over time, she only, she only can, can, uh, hold a hundred and twenty days, you know, but that's, and that's her payout. What, what she, when she leaves with the, her pound, her job can pay, um, of up to a hundred and twenty days. So if you want to sit on the, the bank part of it, that's up to you. I don't care. I just, I just want to, you know, put it out there, but I think that that would be a nice gesture for some employees if they.
I, I think we should do it.
And I think we need to have a policy specifically.
For a sick bank?
Yeah. Because, and, and however we designated or delegated and does, uh, to Rocky's point, you know, if, if, if there's a new bank. But then, you know, will people also have the opportunity to designate to individuals rather than, you know, and, and we, we, I'm just saying, we should say that. We need to have clarity.
Sure.
You know, I'm not, I, I agree with the concept, but we just need to have administrative clarity on how it's gonna work.
Should we look at the school where it's all, town employees, and maybe we'll get bucking out.
Kind of mirror, uh, I'll look it over. I'll talk to Kelly, and she knows, like, some calls and read that.
I think it went through the G B N.
Oh, okay. Um, so, uh, moving forward, going down, that, that, that the dates of sick leave must be submitted to the town manager or the direct supervisor. So this will let the P T O come in. So if an employee needs some P T O time and it's planned, then that, um, employee will submit a time off request form, which I put in place the first week of my last year. So that's, that's already been done. It's, it's just a way of record keeping. And I have, uh, maintained employee calendars. I built employee calendars in Excel and, 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 uh, kept track of the time off, so it's just, everybody knows, and I know, how many, how many days are taken or hours of taken, of sick time. So, um, so that, that form, that's in place. Uh, it looks like she, uh, added that as well, which is great. Um. So the last paragraph, if an employee is, is on suspension or re, rehabs without pay, uh, af- after receiving. So they, it, the employee will not be earning at any time if the employee is suspended. Basically, that's, that's there, so page thirteen, um, yeah, P T O. Uh, I was wondering if we want to add, um, the, the words partner to, um, the employee's personal family, immediate family. I want to bring this up to the times, and I don't know if that's the right word or not, so I'll, I'll throw it out.
I mean, domestic, what's, what's the right political term for that? Domestic, um.
That's what, I mean, that's what it is on a marriage law, with domestic. That's what it is on a marriage law.
Well, I think, I think something like that should be added.
Yeah.
Just, just to cover those employees.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, again, it says, uh, the last sentence in that paragraph, paid sick leave in excess of three days for a period of three weeks will not be allowed. Uh, she's recommending that we delete that sentence. And, and it says it, the determination as to whether or not there, there exists a hardship and the amount of sick leave that may be used for this purpose, showing at this discretion of town manager's ability. So she, she recommended to take that line out of the policy.
Yeah.
Um, so the next paragraph, uh, P T O, I'll change the name right now. P T O is not to be considered a right which an employee may use as expression, but rather a privilege, you know, the, the town manager, may at any time require a certification of a qualified physician certified in the condition of the employee or a member of immediate family, to which, sorry, to be such that justify the employee's absence from employment. So I would like to add any use of, any, any use of, well, no, not P T O, because I wrote this a while ago. I wrote, I wrote any use of sick leave before, after a holiday, before, after a holiday pay, but I must have claimed by the town manager. So in my past, there are employees that used to call in sick to leave before a long weekend. And, um, the policy was if they were going to their sick pay unless they had pre-approval for any, any time, or through personal data or adopt this note. Um, so I don't know how we can encompass that, or if you want me to encompass that at all, but.
Do you see it being a problem here, or?
No, it don't, but you know, I just.
I mean, I've worked at places where that was the rule too. If you missed work the day before a holiday, you didn't get paid.
So that, and we don't have that in our personal policy, so I thought something like that should, you know, just to cover.
Right.
Yeah.
But are you gonna allow them to use P T O?
It's approved, yes.
Okay.
And that's what it says. It must approve by the town manager.
Right, okay.
So, you know.
I don't think that, it's not the.
Okay, so add this one.
Super Bowl Sunday now?
Uh, actually, that was one of the days, I mean, it was right off. The Super Bowl, Super Bowl Monday.
Yeah.
It was a hot day. Um, so, okay, fourteen, uh, upon leaving service after ten years, an employee is entitled to receive full pay at the employee's rate of pay on departure from employment for each accumulated and unused sick day up to a hundred and twenty days, uh, on accumulation. So right now, it's five dollars a day for a hundred and twenty days. So the employee will receive six dollars, I'm sorry, six hundred dollars. If, if the employee has a hundred and twenty days accumulated, they only receive six hundred dollars at five dollars a day. So the recommendation is, uh, full pay at, at the employee's rate of pay on departure from employment. Up to a hundred and twenty days, of course. So that's, that's, uh, like, the word, the word key, next to the question mark, so I think that may be warrant some discussion.
Kind of step in on to.
Well, depends on the wage. So the, the one way I look at this is, you know, if someone leaves, or someone retires, and they have a hundred and twenty sick days, or a hundred and twenty unused days, we give them five dollars a day. There's no incentive for that employee not to call in or take time on them unexpectedly before that person retires. You're only gonna give that person six hundred dollars where if they take their days or a week, then they get full pay. Is that what you told me, like, my scenario?
I assumed it was full pay.
I assumed it was, too.
Three thousand, five dollars a day, unused sick time.
I'd be taking a hundred and twenty days off before I retire.
That's exactly my point.
Case in point, that's gonna be case.
Well, that, that's, you know, so the recommendation, um, is full pay up to a hundred and twenty days. So.
I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna cost us money, but if you've got an employee that's been with you over ten years, then.
Right, and that's, that's the key, is ten years or more.
They need to be treated family anyway, you know. Except Rocky, he's grandpa, right?
And then the next, the next line kind of goes a little, in, in the event of death of an employee, unused accrued sick leave at the rate specified in the preceding paragraph should be paid to the qualifying beneficiary. It was five dollars a day before.
When was that written?
I don't know.
Um, that's been enhanced inside Ben here.
Really?
Forty years ago?
So, many movements have gone. I definitely think we need to have updated that.
So the question now is, now that we're, now that I'm thinking about this, we're talking about P T O, combining everything. So is that all unused time, or is it unused P T O? Is, is vacation separate than, than P T O?
If, if it's P T O, isn't the whole thing?
You have to pay the P T O.
Correct, because P T O is the whole thing. It's one weekend.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty days.
Right.
So the question is, is, I mean, and it's budget, you know, issue, I mean, did they get the five dollars, or do they get the full pay? And then they get their P T O, they don't talk about that. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, no.
That's not the way I agree with that.
No, or, the, the way it's. It's either or. Either the five dollars, we keep it, or we move to full pay, is the recommendation. And, and if, but the P T O part of it is, it's vacations and it's accrued time, monthly time, but.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I understand what you're saying. So if I'm an employee today, that basically retired or retired, so what am I gonna get as a payout? But it's gonna be in my last check.
Any unused time, that, that you, uh, accrue, accrue this year, and up to a hundred and twenty days of, see, that's the thing. Now, now you say it that way, it kind of, it kind of stopped me because it's a hundred and twenty day limit, including, that's including vacations.
Normally, vacations would be counted separately, right?
Well, not with P T O.
No, but I mean, normally it would be.
Right.
Before, with that.
Correct.
So why wouldn't you get paid for any unused vacation?
Yeah.
And the hundred and twenty.
That's what I'm saying. That's my question.
Yeah.
Because it's not, you, I mean, you can't mess with the P T O based on policy, and you can't mess with this based on policy. So if I'm, if I'm retiring today, wherever I have my vacation bank or time, and whenever I have a P T O, I should be getting that.
Yes, that, that's earned time. That is correct. But there's any, any unused leftover time. So if you've taken, if you have five weeks vacation and you've taken three, you have two weeks vacation plus any unused on P T O. Right?
Isn't, isn't vacation clumped in as part of that P T O, or no?
Well, vacation is the P T O, yes, it's.
That's what I mean, it includes sick.
That's why it accrues at that rate.
It, it's sick days, vacation days, whatever it's called, all those combined, right? It's the P T O time.
Right, but he's talking about the sick bank too. You're adding two now, right? Or no?
Sick bank?
No.
I mean, the sick, uh, yeah.
So, so that's, and that's why it's, um, um, I stopped earlier, because the, the, we changed, essentially, we changed it to the word the sick days to P T O.
Right.
So in this policy, it's unused sick time up to a hundred and twenty days. But if we throw in, we add the vacation time in with the P T O now, you can't go up to a hundred and twenty days. It should be all unused.
Mike, could I, could I ask a question?
Yeah, please, Allison.
Um, did you, uh, sorry, I don't have the draft in front of me, but what all, what all kind of, kinds of leave ended up staying in the policy? Is it sick leave and vacation leave and personal time off?
Can you say that again, Mike?
What, what all leave ended up in the policy? Because, I mean, it, it's, it's fine if somebody wanted to change it. It was never my intention to have anything called personal time off in the personnel policy.
Right, right. So that's why, that's why I stopped when I did, because it, it, this recommendation is kind of separate. It separates the sick time up to a hundred and twenty days away from the unused vacation time.
So, what, in the policy, are there the words personal time off? Is that a def, is that a kind of leave?
Yes, it'll leave. It's, it's, uh, so if, if an employee wants, uh, some personal time off, it may not necessarily sit with the person who wants to go to the beach, he can take some P T O, it's just approved.
So that's what we used to call annual leave?
Okay.
Is that right? It's vacation leave?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so you're just calling vacation leave, personal time off, but sick leave is, is still a different category, right?
No, we're, we're, we're thinking about all one, all one big edit.
I wonder if you're not looking at a draft that, I was supposed to do two drafts. Anyway, my recommendation is to avoid personal time off. But that's just me. And Mike, you're, you're much more up to date on what the private workplace does now. Um, I don't like at all lumping sick leave with optional leave. Because to me, sick leave is a safety net. Annual leave is optional. It should be required that someone take annual leave for their own mental health up to a certain amount of time. I don't like combining them, because what that means is if I have the good fortune to be lucky, I don't have to take as much time off.
Correct.
I mean, if I have the good fortune to be healthy, I mean, and sick leave is really supposed to be a safety net. But if you see it as better to use personal time off, and that's your decision, rather than looking at, um, one of my drafts that I didn't mean, that's absolutely fine, of course. It's, it's your policy.
And, and again, that's why I stopped midstream here, because I kind of, kind of caught myself where, where it was a vacation time or annual time is something, something different, because you, you're, you're, you're earning it, but you're earning it differently than sick time. So I wonder if we should not do the P T O, we should call P T O slash, or purposely, it was a sick time, we leave the vacation time separate. But even though, I, I believe the vacation part of the policy says that if, if you, you, you leave, if you have one, ten years, you leave, you still get those vacation times paid. The unused time, I don't know.
How much can they roll over for vacation time?
Uh, it has to be approved by me, it has to be reasons that.
So, you're not encouraging people rolling it over?
Uh, no, but it happens, it happened, it happened to Jim. Um, that for the former chief was here, he was working mu- much, many, many hours, and he couldn't take his time off. So, I I lugged him to move it to the the Niskel unit. So, that's, and that's something as well, that's that's a difference, that's a difference of.
So, the new state with where you earn an hour for every forty hours, that's supposed to be sick time, right?
Nope, that's paid time, paid paid leave, that's all it is, it's just, that's it. You can use it for anything.
I think what we need to do is have a discussion or again clarification on, I think all of this is our, is we're, it's it's interpretation, okay? So, what we need to do is let's show a clear, it's a valid PTO, which I would never take that. Um, and that, a lot of organizations cap that for the reasons that Allison's talking about. To take, and encourage people to take their time off, you know, mental health, et cetera, et cetera. So then, and then we're talking about our our sick time, okay, what's our interpretation on that? And how we're gonna administer that, okay? You see what I mean? Because I think we're all looking at it differently.
Right, and again, that's why I thought.
Pretty standard.
I kinda accomplished all of you.
Yeah, what we need to do is have a standard application that we apply, that it's consistent, and not send in mixed messages. And then all, and the other thing that a lot of folks do is is cap the PTO, that's done in a lot of businesses. So, you know, people can, you know, cap, you know, to, yeah, it's kind of rolling over, but if you get so much a year, and you don't take vacation for five years, you know, you're gonna end up with hundreds of hours of PTO.
Payoff.
And that's, that's not a good, healthy thing to do, based on, you know, Allison's point, whatever. So, what that does is refer to people to utilize their PTO. And it needs to be a fair cap, and then, you know, and when people are told that if you, and I'll just use, and, I mean, we can pick any number, but a lot of times it's like three hundred dollars, whatever. You, when people are told, when you hit your PTO cap of three hundred, you do not accumulate any more PTO.
Mike, the the, I was asked to do a couple of different drafts, I really, the reason I'm breaking in is I hope you're looking at the draft that I thought was a good, good idea. And I know that one of the drafts that I did, which I thought was a good idea, had um caps on rollover on annual leave. Um, and requirement, so you would either use it or lose it for annual leave, and then you'd be paid out a certain amount of annual leave and sick leave at the end of the year.
Right, yeah.
I mean, not at the end of the year, excuse me, at the end of your career.
Right, right, I believe this is, this is the correct draft, because the next, the next article, article four, is vacation leave, and it's, it's lit up, all highlighted in red, and all kinds of things that we'll talk about in the future. So, I I believe I have the correct draft.
Great, thank you.
Right, so, so let's try to get some more clarity, I'll try to get some more clarity on this PTO versus vacation and all that. But are we, are we in agreement that we want to change the the um departure from employment rate to what, full rate of pay? At close to five dollars per day?
I think that's a fair thing to do.
Yeah.
I know some places do have, or whatever, I think it's fair to do so.
So, and is that, I mean, we just, we gotta make sure that when we budget, that we keep those things in mind. You know, and I don't know how, if we're laying any time soon, but definitely, like, in the next, in the upcoming year, just wanna make sure that we follow that.
Yeah, look at you.
Yeah, I see you, guys.
Yeah, so, um, moving down to injuries along duty, uh, nothing's changed there. There was a uh, delusion of number six. Leave down on the right hand side, the injury curve is due to the exaggerated circumstance of the board of selectmen made an exception to to these regulations. That was, she recommended to delete that.
Delete, is that what you said?
Yeah, delete.
I think that's the right.
So, three, uh, three point three civil leave, that's just a check mark there for me, if you wanna do something different with that, I believe that's um, generally, basically, we have to allow that. You're talking about uh, pay and mileage and, you know, and. Uh, three point four is court time for police department, so I'll discuss this. It says, any police officer who is required to attend court for purposes related to town of Greenville, Florida, shall not be entitled, shall not be entitled to any payment from the court if that officer is working their regular shift or overtime for the town during court time. This was confusing.
I thought it was, okay, if they were on duty, they didn't take money from the court because they were paying the town. If they weren't on duty for the town, then, what, they get fifty dollars or something for going to court?
I I never heard of that. No, no, they, we used to, I don't know if we still do, but we used to get money from the court.
Anything from my experience has been that if we're working, we're going to court for anything, the town pays us.
Yeah.
The court pays the twelve dollars, or whatever, it goes back and sign it over to the, to the town, go back into the.
Really, I was always told, say, when I'm on duty, they got fifty dollars for going to court.
So, so the bottom of sentence, it says, if such court time is outside of the officer's paid shift, the officer shall be entitled to payment from the court, which is.
So, you're saying the double dip is enough? I don't think, should be doing that, I mean.
No.
The town will pay, have to pay for going to court.
What you're saying is you're always on duty when you go to court?
If someone's working here in a restaurant or a DUI, and they're a DUI trial, um, the town will pay, that's part of the, part of the job. They have to pay for, you know, going, going to.
So, right.
There used to, I know years ago, there used to be a sign up sheet, and when I was in Bangalore, we had to sign up at the court afterwards.
But they don't do that anymore.
And so, they haven't done that.
No, because I mean, we don't, they keep any money from the, from the court.
So, what this, what this, to me, what this says, okay, any police officer who is required to attend court for purposes related to town of Greenville employment shall not be entitled to any payment from the court if that officer is working their regular shift or overtime for the town during the court time. So, if you're on duty.
I'm here, like, like, well, for example, if Mike had, was working, like, I mean, he had a couple of court, he ran number four, he doesn't get paid for his regular shift.
Right.
He's not getting paid anything extra.
Correct, which is true, because he can't get, when, did he get caught with him? Because it says, if the, if, if, okay, so that, that example, Mike was on a regular shift.
Right, right.
Right. So, if court time is outside the officer's paid shift, the court shall be entitled to pay, sorry, the officer shall be entitled to pay a payment from the court.
But they're not doing that anymore.
I haven't heard that.
So, there's no. I I don't know, they have.
Yeah, I, I, to be honest with you, I haven't heard that for years, it's been, wow, fifteen, ten fifteen years, probably. Now, that's also, I'm sure all of the people.
So, if, if, in your, in your example, if Mike was off duty.
He would get paid, he would, I would say. I'd put something for three hours or four hours.
That's right, that's right, so that's why I wanted the discussion.
It just, it just needs to be changed to just one time, if you go to court, you can pay.
Right, so, it says, or the believing, if if such court time is outside the officer's, right, you're, yeah, just one, one sentence.
Something to, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Um, a couple of times that are, where I was working at a hospital, that our physicians got subpoenaed, that's what we.
Because it's like, take, because that's a good example, um, their reserves, a lot of times, the court will send a subpoena. It was like a, what is it, twelve dollars, or thirteen, fourteen dollars, I mean, it's not much. Like, something like that, I'd tell them, they'd either take, take that, and that's gonna be good, but, I mean, that just seems.
It's a work.
Take that check, have them sign that all, where I would turn that into that, and have that bar, that, and then they can pay their hours, like, for, for.
Right.
And then, for three hours.
I would advocate for that, because the reason that they ended up in court again is.
It's because of work.
Was because of the work.
And the subpoena pay is ridiculous, it's kind of harmful, so.
So, yes, you know, so if they get subpoena pay, sign it over to us, and we'll pay, that's the order.
Okay, so all of this, basically, one sentence, the annual salary.
Will be paid.
Yeah, will be paid for what relates to.
And it's kind of common knowledge, I mean, you know, always something different, but anything, if it is something like that, there is.
So, the next paragraph, or the next article, three point five, reserve service leave, uh, this is sort of like active reserves, the name, you know, the National Guard or anything like that. Um, says, mm, full time active duty or attending, excuse me, full time training duty shall be entitled for leave of absence during the actual duration of activity, but not to exceed fifteen consecutive days in this fiscal year. So, right, so nowadays, if we have, if we have someone that's in uh reserves, and is deployed to, I think it was Washington DC, ten. Um, for sixteen days, you know, what happens to that?
Or one year.
Or one year, right.
So, doesn't that just pertain to their, that they have to go two weeks in the summer? Isn't that what that, that dress thing?
Reserve service leave.
Well, they're getting paid by reserve.
Even if you had, somebody's in the reserve, you have to let them go.
Right, I understand that, but they are, it's not like they're quite volunteering the time, they're getting paid at their, for the reserve time.
Right, so, yeah, um, I I have, I'm familiar with this, so if someone gets called up for for reserves, um, there should be something here, I I believe, that they keep their position.
Right.
Oh, yeah, and they come back to their position.
Isn't there a standard HR language for that?
I think it's.
By law now.
I think it's a law, actually, yeah. And then it says, um, second day within a, in any federal fiscal year. So, that, so that the reservist or guardsman will not suffer any loss of pay, he or she will be paid the difference between the daily, daily pay rate based upon a five day work week, if the town pay is greater for the week work, or receive any military pay. If the mil- military pay is greater than the town pay for the normal five day work week.
It's awful. So, you say you gotta make up what the military doesn't give us, that was, yeah, I don't think that.
Right, I know, because, I guess, in the angle, there are a lot of people on that.
Sure.
And if they wanna use their vacation days to go for their two weeks, they can do that, but other than that, they had to let them go, but they got the military day. I mean, some, some of them, they haven't been there for long, and I had times, would burn their time on it.
Funny you mention that.
And it's double dip, but most of it is like, if you go for your two weeks, you don't get paid anything for the town period, you get your.
You get paid, you get paid.
Town has to let you go.
Right, yeah, so, and 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 that's the same exact thing where I came from. So, the last sentence is, military leave may not be taken as vacation leave.
I can ask my daughter, her, her husband's deployed right now, and he works for Delta, and I think the only thing they have to do is give this job back, he comes back. He doesn't even get to keep his Delta insurance.
No.
No.
So, that's, you know, I don't know why.
Why would you, why would you not wanna let them use this vacation if they wanted to?
Well, they could, right.
Oh, well, they'd be getting paid double.
Paid, right.
There you go.
Well, you can get you a double, you can sell it, well, that would be sold here, but what I'm saying is, you don't wanna, the guard has got to pay him.
That's right, and then you have to pay them.
It would be a difference if if there is, if they get paid less than what we pay them.
Well, no, if they use their vacation, the guys can pay them while they're there, and you've got to pay them their vacation pay.
Correct.
So, then, they get a double pay.
Right. That's only not for pay time. So, so, you know, Allison is, Allison is familiar with deployment.
Tell us about it, Allison.
Actually, I I don't even remember that wording, and I don't know how that works, but um, so, sorry, I might have just left in whatever was in the other, in the policy. Um, Mike, does it look like I actually wrote that or changed it?
No, that was, that was the original policy, no changes.
I I would agree with, uh, I think several people might have said it, but I think Gino said it. There's probably something, I would contact the guard, or or um, get expert advice on that, because I'm sure that there's sort of a national policy that people follow. The MMA might be able to help you with it, I don't know anything about it, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm all legal. And then it says, weekend duty with reactive reserve forces of the United States, of the United States of the main National Guard shall be on the employee's own time, for weekend duty.
That's wrong.
What happens if Jim's in the guard, and we schedule, so he's to take time off, right? But okay, they go for the weekend.
Maybe it's Twitch Alex or somebody like that.
So, I'm just double advocate here.
But he, but he gets paid for his weekend, that time.
Yes, yes, that, okay.
I mean, it's a job.
I want that, I mean, legal, trying to get some advice sometimes.
Am I calling two jobs?
I'm just, in the same aspect, I know guys that take vacation and drive gravel cars, and that, you know.
Right, true.
And the only thing that we have to do is let them go, uh, make sure that they go, they need to go.
So, um, the next, the next part is three point six, bereavement leave. So, um, Allison didn't do anything with this. Um, I wrote down some notes on the side, um, I think we'll add domestic partner now. It's in, because no domestic partner, so we'll add that in. And I also wrote down, is this for, is a question, any, is this for any employee part time, full time? Because it says, any employee shall be excused from work with pay.
We ran into this.
Oh, what?
Bereavement. We ran into this with one of the landfill operators that came into work, and their son had died the day before. Yeah. So, we, I thought we changed something, do any of you guys remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I thought we already changed something to that, to include part time.
So, so maybe that's why we're beginning with that, any employee, okay, just wanna make sure that's clear, that any employee.
Because that person didn't think they could take the time off, I mean, that's just.
Wow.
Terrible.
So, and then I looked down again with the question, should this read full time employee, or full time and part time, so, but any employee, then employee, that's great. So, we'll keep that, and I'll change that, that's already been amended. And uh, let, page sixteen, I almost got with this, uh, bereavement, Allison highlighted, bereavement leave is valid to all staff of employees, regardless of the number of hours worked for a week. So, we should just reiterate, already guys amended years ago. Um, per de employees are not eligible for this leave, but will not uh be penalized, be penalized for the time off, I'm sorry, time off from work or bereavement, departs, department heads will just schedule for a, for bereavement leave for per de. So, um, you see the note there in pink, sort of right, you wanna keep that, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, any, any further discussion on that one, bereavement? All right, so next one, three point seven, family never leave, this is, it's, you know, FMA. Um, the town of Greenville complies with all relevant provisions to the federal state family medical leave act, I think that's the only thing, you have to keep that. So, the last one for tonight is three point nine, leave of absence. She, oh, we go back up there, if you can see the red line on the square on the right hand side, she deleted three point eight, emergency special leave. Didn't it read that little square there? She recommended, she recommended to delete this. Keep that covered somewhere else in here as well. It's about three working days, it's generally three working days. All right, so moving on to three point nine, leave of absence, um, basically just changing the board's select board. And a full-time employee may be granted a leave of absence without pay by a town, amended for periods necessary by the employee purposes, for the purpose of a leave, but not to, but not in excess of ten working days. Leave of absence without pay, in excess of ten working days, up to sixty calendar days may be granted by the board of, of the select board. Uh, the employee is expected to return to work upon the expiration of their range of leave. Continue absence without having arranged for extension of leave may be deemed a resignation from service. Now, that's, there's no, the leations are issued, so that, that, I think that needs to stay as well. And anything, um, no, excuse me, in ten days, you guys have to approve, the board has to approve. So, if you want to go to the E or two months, you have to approve.
I mean, we can go.
They're letting go, thank you, go with it.
Okay, so that wraps up this article, and I'll, I'll contact N R A, and I'll get standards for the following, so move forward. I just wanna have this discussion, so it's good. And then, six link as well.
Thank you for your help with these, Alison.
Hmm.
Appreciate it.
Nice to get it done.
It's my pleasure.
Well, it's, it's brilliant, you can update it, you know, it's brilliant, it's awesome. All right. So, so, next one.
You have another one, oh, okay, seven A, daycare discussion.
So, I was thinking that maybe it should be the same form that we use for committees. What do you think?
Form? You said a form?
Yeah, we have a form here, when people sign up for the, the right department committee nomination forms, which is
Okay. So, we, we just, just write the form in the, uh, Yeah, so I sent the email to N R A, um, about a, a particular conflict. So, this is, this email reminded me, and I have a letter inside, what I typed to them is, it's on the second page and they replied on the first page.
And I, I think that, what I wanna do, I mean, I don't know, but an advisory body, I just wanna get other people involved to kind of brainstorm and share the load or, you know, contacting people and, and, um, so, do you think that plan that they throw out would be applicable?
Would it operate up?
Yeah, it would operate, too, I'm surprised, what, what do you wanna use it for?
But, are we talking the difference between a task force and a committee?
Well, right, I mean, are they interchangeable?
No, the task force is usually short-term and advisory, where like the airport committee and all these other committees are standing one term committees that are ending.
Right, I'm just talking about using the form, but yeah, short-term is a task force, not hoping people will do it for ten years or whatever, you know. Um, maybe a one-year commitment, something like that.
So, we're looking, so, under that example, Dan, we're looking, are you looking for an advisory, um, task force, basically, to make the right decision?
Right, right, in the end, be able to have a plan of action and work on it during that time, um, and, uh, you know, a group of people that are gonna, what we said, I, I, to share the load and resources and credibility.
Meetings?
Hmm.
Have, have meetings?
Oh, yeah.
Right, so, so like an advisory committee.
I would say
Well, if you read, you read the first sentence, how they imply, um, really an advisory board, this is, but in such circumstances, the committee would have no substantive power, so, so that's why it's a advisory committee, but really be the end what you want, but, yeah, I don't
My concern with this, and maybe there, it is not a survey, to have a, a committee that the board approves on whatever, when you're dealing with private enterprise, because the daycare is going to be a private business, am I right?
I would not, I'm not going to daycare, and I'm not going to develop any one, I wanna have the re- resources. I wanna have money, and I don't know if that needs to be, you know, that's why I wanna have a, a committee to figure this out. I don't know if you have a foundation type thing that money would be in, and then different daycares could apply for who serve Greenville kids, you know, either for training, that's a big expense for daycare, uh, who will live with who? That's something that this committee would have to work on.
I, I see the need, I understand completely, and, and I'm more than willing to do whatever I can for that fact. But when you're dealing with municipalities versus private sector, you know.
Yeah, I, I guess
You see what I'm saying, I, I don't think they may, I, I think it needs to be done by a group, but outside. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, Bonnie, because, um, I'm not saying that we need to open a daycare this group, I'm just saying we need to work as a group to find some answers and get going in a direction, and then go from there. Whether or not you form a board, a nonprofit board, or you dissolve it and say, it's not feasible to have daycare in Greenville. Or, you know, whatever the outcome is, but in order to operate within the framework of what's going on money-wise, there needs to be some kind of formal group.
I, I can disagree with that, go ahead.
Has Hank come up with their recommendation yet?
Gonna have a Zoom meeting with them, um, the first week in May, got a couple dates. There's basically gonna be a report that can go attached to any application for money or something like that, but
Some grant writing or something.
Right, they're not really, you know, they're, they're not really invested in it. They've been here, but they've been paid to do this, um, Jim O'Gorman's paid, um, fifteen dollars, I think, to start this process, and they haven't done it because of COVID or whatever.
Who do you, what's he leaving this, or, or, maybe, or what do you think?
Whoever comes forward and wants to do it. It's just, it's just on the ground level, you know, it needs, but it needs, I can't do it myself. Because I don't have the, well, first, when I tried to approach the, um, county commissioners, they don't take one person seriously, they blow it off. But if you have a group with eight people who are signed on to commit to this, and these eight people are saying, you need to do something for it, they're gonna pay attention. It's the same with the CARE Act money, that one is gonna be accessible, but the county's talking about putting an extra door in a building or updating the ATRAC system, and when I talk to them about childcare, you know, with three old men who haven't taken care of any kids for fifty years, you know, it's ugly and it, it, it just needs more, I don't know what the word is for, it's something that other people should be looking into. I contacted the economic development group through my re, I remember their background, um, you know, it, and it's something with this group, this, this select room should, it's a real need, the families can tell, and it's not getting done.
It is a real need, I understand that, have you, have you had any contact from people who are interested in, in having this done?
I don't know, who would, I mean, there's people who have talked about, they say you like to do daycare, but there's a lot involved to it. It's not just a matter of saying, I wanna stop paying, I, I wanna see something that's legitimate. I wanna see something that's after school care, I wanna see something that's big and licensed and has educational programs. I wanna see something real, not just someone taking four kids and sitting on a couch to watch TV, you know.
Would the school be the place to go to? I mean, that's an idea.
They, they looked at the school a while ago, and they said, uh, the, um, um, fire marshal said that the Egress was not doing that over there for preschool. That the, if they were on the basement floor, there was just that one door, and then the, they couldn't do the stairs, and if they were on the other floor, the preschool is, it just, it wouldn't work, so, according to the fire marshal, and anything with daycare, the fire marshal is God. I mean, they tell you, put a sprinkle over your front, you put it in, the next fire marshal comes and you'll say, look, I put a sprinkle, and he goes, that's nice, but you didn't need to do that, and I need to do this, you know. They rule daycare, and you can't do anything without them. You can talk to preschoolers, you know, and, um, so you've gotta get the right building.
So, yeah, and you're even talking infants, too.
Oh, yeah, mhm, yeah, but infants right through acting, I mean, it's a real need, and
This is, is, is a, is a liquor store?
Well, that's all, yeah, and that's all part of it, because nobody in town is doing that. When I did daycare, half my kids were frustrated, and those programs are still there, but you've gotta have a navigator. And so, you've gotta have somebody who will sit down and help walk parents through that. It's a shame, because parents are paying a third of their wages for daycare, and if they were in the program, they could pay ten dollars a week. You know, and it's just, it's a shame it's not happening. It's, no, it's hurting a lot of families.
So, from, from my chair, there's also a little location, what I said.
The big obstacle, right?
The location.
But that's something this group would work on, either decide they're gonna build new and fundraise towards that, and that doesn't mean the school is just gonna want a daycare. That just means they're gonna work towards getting it built. You know, there's a lot of things you can do to help daycare besides run them, you know, so, you can, like I said, provide money for training, and anybody can apply to use that money, um, you can help people navigate subsidies for daycare, you can set somebody up to do that. You know, this is a lot of ways you can help, so. But this, there needs to be a group behind it, like the town. And I don't understand why you would have a problem with it, I mean, what's it gonna, how's it gonna affect you?
I don't have a problem with it at all, Dan, and I understand the need, my, my only, well, question probably is mixing municipal and, this is private, this is gonna be a private business to someone.
Hopefully, it's going to be a nonprofit, if it's gonna survive.
I don't know, I'm not against it, I'm
Yeah.
How are we gonna answer the question, Dan, when the current daycare provider becomes concerned that the town is gonna be involved in the cost and subsidize, um, a, a daycare when, and, and and they say to us, well, the town's giving this person money, but I'm not getting any.
I, I talk to her all the time, and, because she's frustrated, because she had the waiting list of like a year. And so, she's turning away people, and it's hard to turn people away, I, I remember, you know, they used to turn away people with four-week-old babies because it was against the law to take them, and, you know, it, it's hard, but, I mean, I had one woman call three kids to me in a, in a sled. She didn't have a car, you know, to daycare, but she, that's why I wanted to be like a foundation type thing or whatever, where she could apply, she needs a generator so she doesn't have to close the power supply. She could apply for that money that we can access through the CARE Act and whatever, or, you know, somebody else wants to start a daycare, wherever. You know, they could apply for a generator and training, it, it just helps facilitate them, because it's not a big profit-making.
No, I definitely get that, but the, the perception is out there, we gotta be prepared to answer the question.
She can be part of the town board.
Right, but, but again, if she says, well, um, you know, well, how come I'm not getting any of that money directly?
Well, she can apply for it.
Yeah.
But she needs help.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I mean, that, those are the things that need to be
Right, and those are the types of things this task force can do, because when you're doing daycare, you're so busy doing childcare, you can't fill out forms, she can get her own childcare money, you know, she can, she can access a lot of stuff. She could learn how to use the subsidy and whatever, but you just can't do it when you're taking care of kids all the time, ten hours a day, it's hard. Um, I'm, I'm just kind of looking for this to be like a, a clearinghouse of information and get plans going, and hoping that somebody collectively, if you've got, say, eight people, that collectively, somebody's gonna have a little spark from our gear, and everybody else is gonna be going, that might work, and make it, and finally to make it work.
So, you're looking at this more as a resource bank?
Absolutely.
And, uh,
There's no way I'm gonna do daycare again. No way.
But you know, would, would you be willing to head this thing, I, I mean, you know where to get the answers?
I, I don't have enough time to do it by myself, I, I have a full-time business, and I have a family, and I don't have time. If I had time to invest forty hours a week in it, I could probably make it happen, but I'm, I don't. But if you've got eight people that can donate five hours a week a piece, then it's more likely to happen. And with, coming back to the same thing, that people are a lot less likely to help me just get the information, get to the right people, get to right places than a group, that, and especially if you put a couple men out. That's the way life is, you know, if, if you, people are just more responsive to men. So, that's my guess.
What do you thought, take a
Well, it's an obvious need.
Excuse me?
It's an obvious need.
Yeah, I agree.
Something, we're gonna tell you.
There's a great need for it, and we've already lost one employee because of the no daycare. Are you willing to head this group?
By the tone.
That's the answer everybody gets.
We don't
I don't wanna do it, something needs to do it.
I don't know why you think we need somebody to have to do it, we're looking for a
It's gonna be organized, Dan, you can't have eight people out there just flapping in the wind.
And you get the right people that work together, and they assume certain responsibilities, and if one person says, I'm willing to chair this. And if one person says, I'm going to be chair of it, then great. Or you have co-chairs. Or you have, you know, but when you're first starting, we don't need to have somebody running the show.
Do, do you have something to organize it?
It, it will organize itself. And the thing is, if you don't, if you start doing everything yourself, then people won't get involved because they're not going to waste their time. If they can't feel like they're making a deal, you know, if they're not making a donation or whatever themselves, if they're not, then they're just not going to do it. It needs to be a group effort. It needs to be, you know, a theory and Gilbert said she'd help. Um, there are people waiting for the town to say, yes, we are going to have an advisory committee about daycare and they're ready to join in. Not asking for any money, but you bet.
So essentially, what you're saying is, we just need to do a blessing, if you will?
Yes, because.
You've got people, are you organized?
I have a couple people offer and I'm hoping that if the, if the, this board says we want to form this committee, that other people and pick up a paper at the town office, the other people. I'd love to, to see, um, I can't, why can't I go? Allison, is that something you'd like to do?
I, uh, I, I'm having a hard time hearing, but Janet, I, I think that usually, uh, I mean, I think that what you've been saying is that you want the town to support an effort to start a daycare center?
To, no, to start like a, um, a clearinghouse of information and start from the ground up to start figuring it out, what we can do here and just looking for some credibility in the group.
You mean, what you need to do to actually start to look at starting a daycare center? Is that what you mean, Janet?
Yeah, and, and have this group work together to brainstorm some ideas of where we want to go, how we want to do it. It's got to be done, but we just need people to start from the very ground up, from the basement and say, what are we going to do? I'm not, I'm not saying that a year from now, there's going to be a two-million-dollar building built and, um, I don't know. What's, what's going to happen?
Um, what, uh, what we're, is it, is it focused though on, on, is it focused on daycare? Is that what I understand?
Childcare, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, well, you know what, Janet? I usually love your ideas. I don't like this one. Uh, sorry. For one thing, I, I do think the daycare business, and I'll, I'll just tell you why daycare is a business. And anyone who wants to start childcare has to be really serious about it. It pretty much has to be a profit-making enterprise to make it work and people have to pay a lot of money for it. And, uh, the other reason I say that is that, that it seems to me that this town has a lot of active volunteers and I don't think you have the bandwidth to do this. I think somebody who's going to make a business work and daycare is a business, is going to have to have the fire in the belly and the willingness to work hard enough to figure it out themselves. So, I'm sorry, we disagree on this one.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's all right. I've had experiences with daycare, being one for forty years, I mean, for forty kids for over twenty years, so. I, I do have experience, but I don't know what to tell you.
So, is, I guess, I mean, I, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, Janet, we're just asking, I mean, we, I think this board has already identified and agreed that there's, so what you're asking us to do is essentially support an advisory.
Right.
Task force and basically make it public that we support that. And that we're willing to collaborate and to help and, you know.
Right, and this task force can come to you in two months and say, here's what we're thinking might help the childcare situation in Greenfield. And maybe it isn't, maybe Allison's right, it's, it's up to a private. And there's, and there's actually companies that will come into a town and open a childcare center. And, um, there are chains, but even in Maine, who will come in and operate one, but it's expensive. And, um, you know, so that's something we can look at. And we can look at, you know, do we just raise money for education, for the training piece of it? Or do we raise money for, um, materials? You know, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. But that's why I want to have a brain pool and have people figure it out.
I mean, personally, I don't see where that's a problem. You know, question and, 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 but I guess I'm going to ask you point blank. Are, are you asking for somebody on this committee to serve, on this board to serve on the committee? Or basically us just saying, you know, we support the task force? And, you know, if you would identify someone that you think would head that task force up and basically, you know, come in and report to us or whatever, and all these other committees, the task force.
Right.
It, it sounds to me that's up here.
Right, and if somebody on this board wants to join in, I'm, I'm on them. I, I don't have a problem with that.
So, and it sounds like you don't have a lot of time, but it sounds like you may have interest in still being an overseer of.
Or just, I, but I'm not the last answer. There may be people who have other resources that I don't know about. And, um, you know, there's a lot of people who have kids out of town that their kids go to daycare, you know, and they might have some ideas or something that might work. That's what I'm looking for, I'm looking for brainstorming.
We'll go from here.
Oh, it's just a discussion, I know. Whatever the board wishes.
I don't know. So, I mean, we're all agreeing, everybody, do we need that? Or do we need to just, is it just an agreement? Does it need to be voted on or is it just an agreement?
I, well, we all agree that there is a need. And if, if the committee or group is formed, I'm, I'm willing to help them, do whatever I can. I just don't think it should be a town committee. I mean, we can give them a blessing, we can give them all the help they need, but I just think, be, because like I said, it's private enterprise. That's just my opinion. I'll go along with the board one.
Well, at this point, it's not a private enterprise. At this point, it's a pie inside that we need to figure out what flavor it is and then go from there, so.
Well, in the, in the minutes, I think you, and, and I remember that, you would agree into possibly.
I mean, I can help out, but I can't, you know, take a hell of a lot of money.
I'm not worried about any one person being in charge of it because I think once we gather a group of people, we would decide amongst ourselves, do we need to co-chair? What we, you know, what kind of organization do we want? And, and this group would decide that and do it. And if that would make everybody feel better that there's a chairperson or co-chair, then that's fine, but that's not the structure I'm looking for. I'm not looking for somebody to be in charge and designate everything to be done. I'm looking for.
I, I'm not suggesting.
Yeah, I'm looking for collaborative effort.
What do you see the function of the town being, our employees or the board?
Support and, um, and acknowledgement and, um, you know, there might be a time that we have to do a Zoom meeting from here.
I'm just going to say, you have more than walking, we didn't hear or do a Zoom meeting. I can say that privately.
Right, and. But more than anything, credibility. That's basically what I need from this board.
Personally, I don't have any problems with that. As long as we stand within the parameters of, of.
Yeah, I'm not going to go out and apply for a ten-million-dollar grant and sign the talent for it, you know, I'm, this is just very basic beginning.
Quite like, quite, I mean, building, doing, you know. I think every, any one of us has expertise and, well, we all have expertise in something. This is probably just not known, but, I mean, if the group gets together and decides, you know, can they command and do this, it's a good answer, right?
So, the way I see, the way I see this is, it's like the outdoor, Moosehead Outdoor, the mountain bike. If the town's supporting with, with their endeavor, we're allowing them to meet in here, we're having Zoom meetings and they're, they're doing all the lit work, so we can do the fundraising, we're doing, um, the grant writing, we're doing all that stuff. Like the town is supporting them, if we like, if we like the idea, if we like the idea of mountain biking, bringing people to town and allowing them to have a place to meet and utilize our, our town building. That's how I see this, is that something?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we didn't form, and I'm not going to get it, Janet, don't get me wrong. We didn't form a committee for them. They, they brought their idea to us and we supported it. And that would be great if that happened. It's, it's not a town committee. You see what I'm saying? Well, I am behind the idea, don't get me wrong, I'm just. What does the board wish to get, make it?
All group, go on, send up those, see who signs up. I'm going to see if we can get a group. That may be higher set than done until, I never know.
Well, I think, I think people come out a little more.
So, are we agreeing that consensus, I don't.
They say one whole thing, it's a consensus, or you, I need to.
I think consensus will do, so do you guys, what do you want? I'm just a chair.
I just, I just want credibility.
Well, I, I think what the board is saying is, they have a blessing. True.
So, can people fill out that application for?
You, you can do it well. Well, usually.
Uh, because that one that you have for committees is that like, it's just basically people with their address.
But is this something that the board has to approve, like with the airport advisory committee?
Or are you just asking for them to fill out this form and?
Contact information.
Right, you know, right. They can put their email, their phone number, um, you know, they can just change the heading, I mean, the nomination, we're all like. You know, I mean, for childcare advisory, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, I mean, and I think, and the people that, that know that, in, in the interest of the board's closure, it's only fair that, you know, that they fully know that, you know, the select board is not the governing board around us.
Right.
You know, they're going to be an advisory board that, you know, they're not going to be answering to this select board.
No.
And that's an important point, I think, for anybody that they want to serve, they need to know it.
I know it's a, a big step, but it's beyond hesitation. And I'm really kind of surprised that the Economic Development Group doesn't address it. You know, I'm just kind of doing it out of necessity because no one else is doing it. I'd love to see some other groups take over and actually do it. But the couple attempts here in town were half-hearted and not successful. Like when the Y came and.
And that was, that was well aligned and, you know, honestly, you know, I put that together through the hospital and saying the reasons that you're concerned about was our thing.
Yeah.
One of the things that shut down initially was when Y committed, they told parents what their rates were and then they jacked their rates. You know, and, and C A D put money on the table for that, for their own performance. You know, and, you know, and it's, it's too bad that it ended up with a win. But it clearly, I kind of experienced.
Yeah.
The answer to your board.
Okay, and just a few things here to update you on. Uh, the M and A risk management inspection at the library in the end facility now was completed, uh, last week. I have, I've not yet received the results nor the action plan from, and that's why I've got to just let you know, let you know what the plan is going to be. On July fourth, on Sunday, fireworks are scheduled, contract signed with the fireworks company, fireworks company. Question is, two questions, something to think about actually. Where do we want to have these? And we have one waterfront again, how are we going to barge? And secondly, parade, is that, we want a parade?
Absolutely.
So, it's just something to think about.
I thought we legally couldn't tell them the law.
I don't know. It just started up there, I don't know.
Well, I think they have a law.
I thought we didn't make a law last year.
Well, I, I think, I believe the law, which I mentioned actually, was for residential, I think, residential fireworks. But I did, I also said that I spent three hours up there, four of us picked up a black crash that had crashed that was swept up off the auto, which would be in the lake. Yeah, that's, that's something to think about. Um, and we don't have a barge. So.
Well, it's the construction guy.
I would too.
You keep on with the construction guy.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, you know, that's a jerky, but can you use your barge? I don't know. So, something to think about.
Because that's going to be on.
We didn't say it comes in.
Sunday, Sunday night.
Didn't we used to shoot them off the junction of war?
I landed that board there?
We did.
What, it's Sunday?
Sunday, yeah, and it's planned for Sunday night.
Mike, we used to close off the junction of war to traffic and shoot them off that.
Why did that change? Well, I know why it changed, uh, because the traffic turned across from town, the nightmare is what I heard.
No, it changed because of one year for one reason and then everybody liked it over here better. I think that's the reason too, Janet, I think, because then it got put over here. That's why I liked it, but they, but I mean, they were going to. Fire department was part of the junction of war because they, they had them all the way around, didn't they?
Yeah.
Richard, yes, I think, yeah. But they were going to do it for one year over here and then once they get over here, they said, we're not going back.
So, is there more room for, for people, pedestrians, the, the viewers? I know what, on top by Woody's is a great spot up there.
Yeah, they have all the dress on and.
I think, that's another thing, the truck over there, that didn't help any.
Paul was never really impressed with it either.
Nope.
No, it messed up his business.
That's why he said, good, keep it over there, I don't want it back here.
So, something to think about, now, I just started up here, coming quickly, thank you. Uh, speaking on that note, as of right now, happening this summer, flying, Moose Mania, the gazebo concerts, Moosehead Music Festival, Forest Heritage Days and the Craft Hairs, they're all happening as of right now.
Awesome.
Mm-hmm. Roxanne will be sending out two hundred and sixteen notices, um, just a reminder that you haven't paid your taxes yet. So, it's two hundred and sixteen residents in town that have not paid their taxes. So, it's two hundred and sixteen residents in town that have not paid their taxes yet, that's my last year, Mark. So, that, a total, a total of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars for those two hundred and sixteen notices.
Is that better, Mark?
Two hundred and sixteen, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, for them.
Yeah, that's the average right now.
So, and, um, I'm sure someone came in, some came in last year, that's in some, oh, shoot, three. So, um, I think it's going on tomorrow.
They should be.
Uh, the heat pumps in the, uh, in the townhouse building are installed, they should be turned on tomorrow. And the fire fountain should be installed and turned on tomorrow as well. So, heat pumps, uh, at that, a street sweeping. The street sweeping will start the week of May third, so it's a week after next. Um, for the whole week, we have, we have, uh, the attachment, we'll pick up the sand like we did before, the winter sand, dump it in the dump truck. And haul off, and sweep on people's lawns. And so, right after that, I have, um, contacted the striping company, and that, so that's been scheduled for the middle of May as well. Get the stripes done, and crosswalks, and hopefully get it done on Memorial Day, but we're not quite sure, but we'll see how that goes. Uh, you have the budget actuals on the March thirty-first, nothing, no surprises, and you'll see those. Looking good for the end of the last quarter.
Yeah, on the, uh, the X R statues, that's possibly surprising, you know?
Well, how many, how many, it's funny you say that. Today, I'm really bad at math.
Yeah, but that's another little green bill. You can't consider that all.
Okay, well, we, we
Yeah, we did a hundred and twenty-five in two weeks.
New restriction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you have to understand too, that it's not just green, though, we do all of Moosehead Lake, so if we're all the young, we're gonna, you know, it's not just
It's still tough, you know, yes.
Yeah, it's tough, it's tough.
My point was, it was good to see that on the positive revenue side, the budget, because it's actually a really big thing. And then licenses and permits too.
Right.
For the same reason, then that's Bill's office as well.
Uh, licensing and permits.
It's Billy permits.
Well, he, he is, Bill's office is code enforcement, um, under code enforcement.
I was just talking at general revenue.
But if you look at, he hears it, I'm like, three hundred and seventy-five percent or something. Which leads me into this next report.
I got one more question for you.
Sorry.
On the intergovernmental, okay? Uh, we're at, uh, four oh four, two four one, budget five thirty-six. So, do we have a billing or something we have to do for someone, or is that?
Uh, is that on the expenditures? Is that the?
No, actually, it's on the income, so we budgeted five thirty-six in July, three, twenty, March, well, March twenty, whenever, twenty-one, four hundred and four thousand and forty-one.
Um, I have to look at that in fact here, now.
Yeah, well, it, I don't know.
I don't have it in front of me, so. Is the bill numbers in?
Yeah.
Is the bottom line?
Yeah, it's, it's a, uh, six zero one three.
That's just a billing for the way of foreclosure.
Okay, that's
But that, that came this month in April, so.
So, I'm, that's probably, yeah.
Just so you know, she didn't do it.
So, um, Bill's office, just, just the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the year-over-year comparison of permits issued to date. This is, this is sign permits, additional assignments, garage, um, permits, torches, decks, demo. All permits that he issues, basically. So, in two thousand I D, we have five year-to-date. In two thousand twenty, we had two year-to-date. This year-to-date, we have thirty.
That's amazing, with the price of lumber.
But, but again, it's, it's like, you know, condition, it's full conditional use permits, it's through demo permits. So, it, it, those are all things that, that, there's a lot of things happening, but it's also a credit to his office where the, the, the awareness is out there, that you need a permit for stuff now. And, um, but we, you need a permit in the past, but now they didn't. So, it's, it's, um, it's good to see that, that, that increase of, I mean, thirty, we have two last year. So, um, interesting, interesting. And even in-ground pool permit.
An in-ground pool permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, interesting. So, that's what I have, three to, right now.
Mike, on the Fourth of July, what do you think about Forest Street? That's a big area over there, and, and not, it contains
I'll, I'll go faster than you.
I'm sure it'll be a lot of hoops to jump through, but it, it could see it, from the way of downtown. So, that'll make everybody happy again about that. Um, and, uh, it really is a big area over there, the grassy area. So, we wouldn't be pulled in the lake bad.
You should pull it up. Look, I can ask him, for sure. Go to you.
That's
Boy, it's safe, though.
Right. They probably won't walk.
Okay, other comment? You have any comment? Allison, you have any comment?
Thank you.
No, just thanks for, uh, letting me continue to be part of the team. It's always great to see you guys.
Well, we, we're happy to see you and thank you for all your help. Okay, what's going on? Janet?
I was wondering today, when you guys have to do like an emergency file, like you kind of had to do this morning, can you put scam and rich, scam and roll, like it's a topical list?
Because, oh, we, we put flood the streets kind of at the
Yeah.
But I understand the daycare's out there.
Because, uh, just that, over the altitude, I mean, there was four inches up there when there was one at my house.
Right, well, it came quick, you know.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know, I know.
And we had one location, and Paul was out sick this morning, and he, he came in to help. And his kid was all alone, and I was on the phone with him, and
Yeah.
We did that, because he needed to go out, and he, he got flood the street quick.
Yeah.
He was coming down, and spirits were huge.
Oh, yeah?
You know?
And, and scam and roll is really bad.
Right, but Paul came in after and helped out.
Yeah.
I, yeah, that's part of it, that whole loop.
Yeah, the five mile loop, yeah.
The hell were they in, you said?
Okay. Yeah, that's Paul's
I had three and two, this
Yeah, that's Paul's loop, this scamming.
Five mile.
Yeah, the five mile.
Did you say somebody quit?
No.
No, Paul was sick, Paul was sick.
Paul was out sick this morning, sick, on the way to the doctor's room. Not quite, but that loop, that call was off, right. Hopefully tonight, we're gonna hear as much as they say, but we'll see. Ten nine was off on that, so it'll be a couple of days, what we for a while.
Anything else, Jan?
Yep.
Uh, planning board minutes, haven't been done in a while, since like December, so I don't know if anything
I will pass that along to planning board.
Why are they not getting done, do we know?
Um, well, first, who does? The, the secretary, so secretary for planning board, yes, not in town, first one moves away. And for some reason, it just, just keep snow hauling out, you're behind a couple of weeks, and now it just, it's, it's probably six or seven weeks, you know.
Okay.
Then I can pass that along. Hey, Jan?
Mr. Corkby, any word on a start date for construction on the road?
Nope. Okay, the, uh, contractor had the family registry, and he got, uh, we're supposed to have a timeline meeting today, Wednesday, but, uh, I received an email yesterday, and he had his call to Tennessee for family registry, so it wasn't able to make the meeting, so it's postponed, so I don't know. Soon as I know you press the call.
That effect, huh? Yeah? Mm-hmm, good. And do we have any addresses? We have motion to adjourn. One second.
Yeah, first one, first time.
You know, it's pretty
All of the tables. But, yeah.